We'll call to order the June 23rd, 2022 city commission meeting. Everyone please rise for the flag salute. I'll call these.
Commissioner Kribel.
Here.
Commissioner Langraff.
Here.
Mayor Holtzman. Let the record reflect Mayor Holtzman is absent.
Pursuant to the open public meetings act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. For those of you who don't attend very often, we go through our agenda. This is our workshop at the beginning of our meetings. And then we will go through, once we finish that, we'll have a public comment period on the items that we discussed tonight. And then we'll go through our regular agenda with some public comment periods. I think there's some ordinances. And then we'll go through our resolutions as well and on with the rest of the agenda. So first on tonight's agenda is a presentation from Jim Ruttell, our grant writer for the city. Jim?
Evening commissioners, members of the public, just having a little update on the grants that the city has received in the last couple of years. There's about four, a little over $4 million in grants that have been brought into the city for various projects. The majority of which about $2.9 million are for various DOT grants. Both municipal aid, which are general paving projects throughout the city, as well as a significant amount, about $2 million for areas of Vetner Avenue between Oxford and Baton Rouge, that area where the commercial area where signals are going to be replaced and funding's available for significant improvements there. In addition, there was about $1.2 million FEMA funds received. There's a study that's now underway in Vetner Heights, the south end of Vetner Heights. That was funded by Grant from FEMA. In addition, we continue to work with residents to elevate their homes. Commissioner Langraff, you would remember that our first applicant is now very close to raising their house. And they are actually, we're waiting for FEMA to approve a cost modification and a time extension. Congressman Andrews has been very involved. His office has been very involved. And I expect we're going to get that approval in the next few days and then they'll be ready to move forward. So.
That's on Dorset Avenue?
Yes. So some of these are difficult, some are very easy. But it is important that, you know, we have that vehicle to allow people to, or help people to raise their homes.
That's great.
In addition, there's a number of things that are, projects are in the works. We do have an application before FEMA for Balkes on Winchester Avenue from Jackson to Surrey. The area is owned by the, by the city. It's about $1.7 million. That will probably, we've gone through all the process. It's been ranked and kind of tentatively approved by FEMA. We're waiting for the final approval. That should be coming shortly. In addition, we've been working with the city engineer and your staff on an application for the replacement of lead service lines throughout the city. That's an application for the I-Bank. And we have the application in. Right now, we're refining the environmental report. It's really a citywide project, significant dollars. And fortunately, the I-Bank has prioritized lead service lines. There's a, a grant right now, I think it's a two and a half, two to two and a half million dollar grant a year for the, for the first portion of the cost and then a low interest loan for the remaining cost. And that can change. You may have seen there's, there's a effort now by many of the business organizations in the state to have the state put more of their funding, both the infrastructure funding and the American Rescue Act funding into infrastructure. So, you know, that formula can change, but there is, there is grant funding at least at this point for a portion of the cost. And obviously that project will go probably over a 10-year period. So it's a long-term project.
On that same topic, Jim, not to interrupt your flows you've got going on there, but the, I had a chance to talk with the P Commissioner Lattarette and mentioned the trouble of getting funding to dissolve. There's not just the I-Bank, there's other state funding mechanisms. We're pursuing those as well. I know we're going to meet with them in the next few weeks, but I want to make sure we exhaust all avenues of funding. Because we're talking 60-plus million dollars over the next 10 years.
There's definitely.
Do this work, so.
Yeah, and you're right. There's, there's been funding available directly from the federal government as well as from the state. And there's probably going to be more because with the infrastructure bill, they're still prioritizing things. So you make a good point. There's, there is probably going to be other avenues that we can pursue. And we were kind of putting the foundation together now so that whatever funding is available, we have all the environmental assessment completed. We have all the costs completed and we have no plan to move forward. And, and that's really it. The other, any other project that we worked on with the city is the environmental or the energy savings plan, which we're all aware of, and that helps to fund the retrofitting of the streetlights throughout the city as well as improvements in city buildings and also electric vehicle charging stations and like, so.
I think that you said today, I think we're hoping to start the roof one public works building in the fall, right? That'd be nice. That's a long time coming.
Yep.
It's a long time coming.
If there are any questions that we have to answer.
What was our total? About four and a half million? That we have under, under wraps so far?
Yeah, the total is about 4.1 million.
4.1.
Yep, 2.9 from DOT and about 1.2 from FEMA.
And that's over a whole period of time.
The last three to four years.
Four years. And first of all, I mean, this is a lift, four million lift that is helping take some of the steam. And you've been doing this since 2016 for the city?
We've been doing this longer than that.
Longer than that?
Oh, yeah.
We've done this for almost every municipality.
Right.
And I gotta say.
Get it all straight.
It's like our administration.
It's a, it's a team effort. I mean, you don't do this by yourself. If you don't have the right information, you can't move forward. So, you know, we work with, you know, your finance office, your administrator, engineering, public works. It really, fire department in some places, it really does take everybody. And if you don't get the right information, you don't win the prize. So. It's important.
I appreciate the, I see, you know, forty emails of different departments that can try to work with them within the parameters of each grant that you bring up to us. So it's, it's a, it's a big lift. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jim, do you happen to have a rolling total since, since this administration, since you've been with them of grants?
Well, I mean, the 4.1 million is since 2019. So it's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And there's pollinator plants coming.
That's true.
Yeah.
And they're great. Didn't mention those. But that's a neat, you know, community effort and it's, it's got a lot of interest.
Yeah.
And hopefully there'll be more for Betner West. We're working, we've been working on that as well.
Great. Hope so. Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Good seeing you again. We're not doing our department head reports tonight, are we? I see Jimmy here, but you're here for another reason, right? Airbnb, right? No capital discussion at this point. So the following items are scheduled for action this evening. In the regular portion of our commission meeting, we're going to approve minutes from both regular and executive sessions from May 12th, May 26th. We're going to pull June 9th, correct? This commissioner Kribel was not here. I can't, right? Right. So we're going to pull that. We have some ordinance, no ordinance introductions, or we have the potential ordinance introduction if we go with the. Mark, that's when we're going to wait till next month, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to wait on that. We're going to discuss it tonight and then we'll come back for the next month. Good. So no introductions, but we do have, looks like three public hearings and adoption of ordinances.
If I can just circle back to the, that, there was a lot of interest on the one that we're going to rework on overnight parking.
Yes.
Where we just had some late changes on it. There's definitely some people that were interested in it. They contacted me. We're trying to make it more comprehensive.
Agreed.
So we just need a little more time and we'll, we'll introduce a new ordinance and adopt it.
Okay. Good. So we're going to pull 12, 2022-012. Now we're going to pull that one. We'll revamp it and break.
I agree for you to talk a little bit about.
Yeah.
Size of the trucks and different things, the number of that too is an issue.
Yeah, and the wording that it is for a commercial purpose, which would exclude large SUVs.
Correct.
That are not.
Okay.
Commercial purpose. So that, that, that takes that out of the mix. But there's other things that we're trying to limit to make it more comprehensive. And in the spirit of what is being sort of, we want to try to avoid, which is commercial vehicles being left in overnight during.
Agreed.
So, and, and trailers, we might deal with separately with separate. Construction.
All right, good. So we're going to pull that one. With the first one, we're going to have a public hearing on and adoption would be 2022-010, and that is our pool construction de-watering. Then into our chapter 47 sewer water utility. What happens now when someone has to de-water a lot for a pool is they pump it into the street through a siltation bag, but it just goes into the street, down to the storm drains. We're going to now force them to do that into a sanitary sewer manhole and they will meter that and pay for the gallons they put into our system. If you recall, we had some residents concerned that we were running down constantly. You know, it's been dry for seven, eight days and they got water in their gutter. So we're going to try and eliminate that. Next, any more questions on that? 2022-011 is cleaning up the alcohol beverages for like Airbnb.
BYOB.
And outdoor restaurants where they can have alcohol on the sidewalks or allows that in certain areas within the city. 2012, we're going to pull. And 2022-013 is fire department fees. And Chief gave a real good explanation about it at our last meeting.
Okay.
Handles fees for varying services in fire department.
Yeah.
Consistent with other communities, it's still less than a lot of communities.
Right.
Consistent with many of them.
Bringing out the date.
Yep. Resolutions, we'll do these by consent. The first is 2022-210. And that is American Rescue Plan firefighter grant from New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. It's a $75,000 ask for firefighter gear. Again, I think Jim Ruttell will help us with that as well. Chief, always a good way to pay for things. Good with that one?
Yeah.
2022-211 is authorizing the hiring of Michael Anthony. I'm going to butcher that. Basaco. No way. There's too many letters in that. I'm sorry. He's going to be in our task collector office. We welcome to have Michael Anthony to the, to the fold there. Next one is 2022-212. And that is the authorization of fireworks display for the city of Vetner on July 3rd. It'll be after our fun run. Commissioner Kribel is going to run in.
Right.
Not sure how much fun it's going to be for him, but we might, we might pay someone to run alongside that whole mile. Just videotape that.
Oh, great.
I was reading through this and I, I think it's a great idea to, we have a rain date and we have the rain date as our national night out.
Night out, yeah.
So that, that's awesome. If we have to cancel that, that night, we got a good rain date, so.
It really turned into a great event. There's going to be combined with concerts and the run. So it's starting, I guess around six.
Six o'clock.
And then running until dusk and fireworks happen. So it's kind of a bonus night.
It is.
For fireworks.
It'll be nice.
I appreciate.
No one else in the area is doing fireworks at.
No, there's a lot of coordination in the back with Maria and police, fire, definitely police and fire. We have a whole strategy of how they're going to shut off the sidewalks and where, where the actual charges are going to be set from, distances.
Insurance fees that have to be done.
So, yeah, right. It's a, it's a very well laid out plan.
Resolution 2013 is authorizing, enforcing no parking within the city from July 1st through September 30th for very special events. Any questions on that? That standard, we kind of pass that in summer.
Right.
Resolution 214 is revocable license agreement concerning property at 118 North Dudley Avenue. Block 115 lot 16. This is for stairs, as I recall, at the front entrance stairway. And we were okay with that. I know you presented to us last week and we were, last month, we were okay. Any questions there?
No, I saw, I saw the big word.
Resolution is 215 is extending the grace period for third quarter taxes and that's something we typically do, Al, each year.
We don't anticipate the state have a budget, so.
Right.
We have a statute, we have to have 25 days for mail-in.
Okay. 16 is awarding a contract for water meters to Core and Main LP for an amount not to exceed $14,310. And that's for our water meters as we replace them in the city. Going forward, we typically buy them each year, right, Ernie? Resolution 217 is awarding nine fire hydrants to Catarina Supply Inc. for an amount not to exceed $32,445. Again, it's a continuing process, kind of a partnership with the fire department. When they tell us they got a problematic fire hydrant, we go and replace those, put more modern ones up, provide the flows and easy access that you guys need. You guys, your guys.
Right.
Resolution 218, authorizing refund of recreation fees to Michael P. Wolfgang with Down Beach Surf Camp. Must not have been able to attend. 219 is authorizing seasonal employment for city event and public works recreation department. This is for the summer camp. Hire the, the staff that we need for that each year. And then we're adding 220. Adding 220 is resolution that would hire three summer, basically beach sanitation employees. Joe Calvi, Mike Batanza, and Anthony Colava. All starting, they already started. It's I guess as of June 6th and 13th, for each of those guys to start at a rate of $13 per hour. Now, we've had, these guys have been on the beach before, right? These all know. Okay, good. We'll do our bills and payroll. Presented by Al. Discussion items. I know we have a few things to discuss tonight. I know I have a couple. We go through those. Okay with that. I think while we have Jimmy here, we want to talk about our short-term rentals. Okay, everybody calls Airbnb or BRBO, whatever you want to call them. Been some concern voiced by not only staff, but also residents that we're getting a lot of one nights. That's not really what we had anticipated. We wanted to see it more of they're coming here for weekend. Come here to stay, eat in our restaurants, shop in our stores and do that. They're coming for one night, they're going to a concert, Atlantic City. Not, we're not getting any benefit out of it as a community.
Right.
Or they're hosting one night parties, which we don't like those either. So we're, the suggestion is a three-night minimum. That gets here for a good amount of time. They're going to use our facilities here in the city. They're going to go to our stores, go to our restaurants and hope.
Right.
And enjoy betting the beach and whatever we can.
I've had the same similar complaints from both, from neighbors about the one night.
Yep.
And I, I think it's in line, a three nights minimum is in line with the type of character that we're trying to create. So I think it's a good, it's a, it's a good way to sort of mitigate those one night parties.
And what I think we can do, and then Jim and Mark, you can help us out with this, is in the, as we amend the ordinance, you know, these guys get commercial license. We don't do CO inspections on each of these guys as they flip over, from my understanding. Once a year. What will happen is if we get a complaint that, hey, you had one person in, we pull the merchant. And they get fined.
Right.
They're not in compliance with their merchant license, so.
Some accountability.
There is accountability on it. You're saying maybe two nights instead of the three? Bad thought. Trying to get that Thursday night out. Thoughts on that?
I mean, I think the three night is what most, most other.
That's what I've, I've not seen. One or two nights in places that do restrict.
Right.
There, there's towns don't allow it all.
That's a good point. I mean, if you're going down, so we got necessarily staying Sunday night.
True. If you want to get kind of in the mood, I don't want to weight too much on this.
No, we would go on.
But maybe we can get, maybe you can talk to Beth and see what her thoughts are on it. We're not, we're not adopting it tonight, so we would be able to change it for next month, one, two months. We can do a little more research. Do you have any data on that? Did anything?
It's a week.
Jim, see if you can talk into that mic. We can't, it's not being heard.
Yeah, I think Margate was a week minimum. Enforcement isn't going to be too easy with this. Know what I mean? It's probably going to be more or less on a complaint basis.
Exactly. It will be.
And then.
And then that particular order will know.
And, and I believe that we're, we're going to have to get, and it's going to be an enormous amount of work. Each time you put somebody in there, you're going to have to email us or notify us of the list of people that's in there. So we could keep track and enforce it.
Yeah, that's kind of.
No, I already know it's going to be to enforce it.
Yeah, I think, look, this is how it came to our attention. The neighbors in, in the immediate neighborhood, they're going to tell us. It's, I get the complaints.
But yeah, but then still though, verify the names, then to verify, you know, that now if we have somebody new in there.
Right.
It's a process.
There would be, yeah. But I think that's, you know, show us the contract. We want to see the contract.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're going to have to receive all this document.
But I think that's only when there's a complaint. I don't think you're going to have to get it on each one.
Yeah.
Right? I don't, I don't, I don't want to create that, that ball of wax that you got to do it on each one.
You are creating.
Well, but, but only when there's a complaint. So we send out a mailer to everybody who has a license. And everybody gets merchant to a license for short-term rentals. And we tell them, look, you've got to do minimum, minimum stakes, whether it's two or three nights or whatever. You're going to, and we're going to enforce it. Here's the fines if you don't. Pull your merchant till you can't rent anymore. There's a suspension of your license.
Why do you think that they need to be tracked each time?
Each route? Just to, to enforce it. Like I said, well, you complain.
Right.
Now, now we got to go through the process of receiving that documentation instead of already having it.
But I mean, we give them notice when they make an application. Every time a new merchant goes home. For this, for, for short-term rental. They now know that it's a two-day or three-day thing.
Yep.
And just like in the police force, we can file a claim. There is a claim for one particular repeat offender for that minimum, limiting that minimum. And that, that's when you would say, well, you have, send us the documentation for that. Not, not every time. Because that would be, we have to, we have a 300 airspeed times 50 weekends. That's all, that's too much. That's too much to track. So I would, I agree.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going after the people that are doing the rentals or renting the place. We're going after the owners of the property. So all we need, all we have to have is that merchant to a license and let's, let's continue the conversation, but I do want to get this on the agenda for adoption in July.
Sure.
So it's in place for the rest of the summer, but I'm, we'll talk about that part of it a little more, but I, I think, I don't know that I want to have them, each time they change over, to have to notify you.
Now, the adoption in July, you're calling like the end of July?
It's two readings, a first and second reading should be the end of July. We're really going to play in August, so there's no limitation right that. No, we, we're getting one nights.
Right.
I mean, you can rent more than that.
Right.
You're not really, if you're under, if you're more than 30 days, you're not a short term. We made that definition. That's the.
Right.
Definition of itself.
Should we check the Margate to see what they're.
They don't allow anything less than seven.
Than seven, yeah. That seems to work.
I was, I was thinking too, you give, you give change of tenants once a week. So if it's four days, then three days you don't rent. If it's for Friday and Saturday, you don't get nobody in there until next Friday.
Right. Let's reach out to our contacts in Margate, see how that works for them. It's working.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I also think that you might, I don't know, I agree. I think you see, when I, when I rent Airbnbs, I see those off weekends. Those off days are also those, you know, the weekends are always booked solid in resort towns. But those three days that are not.
Cheaper.
It's cheaper, they get filled. You know, by people that can't work it out.
Yeah. So I think a little bit more.
And I personally would like to wait till the end of August and get through summer because it's right now.
Midstream is hard.
And right, to get host compliance, to change their paperwork.
Okay.
Know what I mean? To where, I have some changes right now to where December expires. By December 31st, must comply.
Right.
Know what I mean? Like do more or less.
At the end of the year is.
Right, starting when we send out the new applications.
Okay.
And that way everything's clear.
All right. I'm okay with that.
I think so too. Right, you probably got all, you probably got all of this booked up already.
From the investor's point of view. That's right. You can't, you'd be, you'd be almost reaching some of those.
Right.
This pre, this pre-order. I agree. All right. So discussion.
Yep. To continue, yep. Stepping back, when I missed the first item is the community.
Right.
Right now, it's really not open to the public to use other than county senior program, right, Ray?
Correct. The city has used it, compliance itself, but that's the issue, and then it has to be put back into the way it was meant.
Yeah, the issue we're having is the cost of, of the cleaning of it. COVID protocols require us to clean it and it's five to 100 bucks depending on. It was 500 bucks.
I'll think it's that.
When we first, when we first started it, maybe that's what I'm in the middle.
We've been doing, we've been doing hard.
Okay. We're, we're getting a lot of requests from groups to come in there and use it.
Yeah. Well, so we have the seniors in there and the place. Senior program under the county, which follows the state protocol, they're required to have certain spacing. Tables and chairs spacing and they're required to disinfect that room when they leave it. So when they leave it midday, they're leaving it the way it should look the next morning.
Right.
And it's just, they disinfect it every day. So the issue is when somebody comes in there, even if it's us, we have to make sure we put it back the way we left. And many people will come in for fire products, be, be, disinfected. There's a list, a side list. You know, or they'll do it when they were in there. I don't know how you handle it with other groups in there.
They would have to, how I would think it would happen is they would have to pay as part of the rental of the room, the use of the room. You'd have to cover those costs, whether it's our people cleaning it or not. They've got to commit after hours after that event. So a lot of times at night.
Yeah, you would have to have it ready for 8:00 AM.
Right.
Cleaning company provide that thing?
They would probably do it. They used to do it.
Right.
At my time, I don't know.
Yeah, we need, we need to fix costs for that. Let's, let's do a little more digging on that. Find out what that cost would be.
Because you're probably talking like, in some cases, kind of.
Right. Because I know
7:00 AM.
Some of the recovery groups that we're meeting there are now using local churches, which is great for the church because I'm sure they're getting some fees out of it. But the parking issues that they're causing in those immediate neighborhoods, there's no parking for some of these churches that they're using. So it's a problem.
You're going to have to rely on whoever to put that room back to the same.
They'll be required to do it.
They will.
And if they don't do it, they don't get used to it anymore. I think there's, there's ways to govern that and control that, I should say. The fee is going to have to go up, cover the painting of it. Let's find out what that is and then we'll circle back. And then we can talk about it and see if it's something, you know, with our staffs and see if it's in the fire department, PW. See, see if we can open it back up. I don't, you know, it's a building in the city. That's, that's a public building that we're not getting its full use out of.
Right.
Like to see it back in use. Very few buildings can be used for that. Right. Next item is Atlantic City Electric. This goes to the banners on the, on the boardwalk that we've been talking about for quite some time now. Just for the public's information, we started this banner program last year. It's a huge success. Just for the public's information, we started this banner program last year, been a huge success. The banners on the boardwalk are look great. Tim and your, your group did a great job getting them designed and, and marketed to local businesses and sponsors and all that. Uh, this year we were told by Atlantic City Electric that you can no longer have those, those banners on the boardwalk because they are advertisements. We disagree with that characterization. We think it's a sponsorship. Um, because the very bottom of these banners, it says. How the electric or whoever, whoever might have purchased it. But for the most part, it says Ventnor City and whatever section of town it's in, St. Leonard's Track, North Beach or whatever. Uh, it was a great addition to our boardwalk. So we've been going back and forth with Atlantic City Electric. Um, our plan is to potentially take over those poles. So we can own them and maintain them ourselves and put up banners that we want, put up cameras that we want. We were told we can't put cameras on those poles either. Uh, not a very good partnership, I've got to say, with our friends at Atlantic City Electric. So. We, we've asked for some information before we do that. We want cost analysis. They're somewhat, the last conversation we just had this evening, they're balking and providing some of that information. They agreed to it in the MOU.
Right, I think I repeated that.
Yeah, and now they're saying they're not going to give us that information, so.
I'm going to have to.
Communication.
Yeah, yeah. Right. For the recommended procedures, do they look at the whole six months? They're going to have to provide us as the plans for the road lanes and associated with the.
Right.
So I'm going to get a.
Good. Look, we want, we want to partner with them. We want to do it because we, we get it, but we can't advertise on their poles, although they seem to be on every other pole in other places.
Trying to clear it up, but we want to go into it with both eyes open, not one hand over.
Agreed.
So we just need all the information so that we, you know, there's no.
I think Mark said, we need to make an informed decision.
Exactly.
All right, um.
Ultimately, I think that it adds a freshness.
Agree, tons of compliments on it, so it came out nice. The last discussion item I have is request for support to protect residential and ecological communities on New Jersey Atlantic coast. That's a long way of saying, the Pineland Preservation Alliance, the last four years, that three or four. Yeah, have come in and from the north side of the pier towards Atlantic City, east side, what everybody called it, that's what we call it. And staked out the area at the base of the dune. And what their, their hope is, is that the vegetation on the dunes will grow down the face of that dune, the toe of the dune. And stabilize it better. And it's worked. Uh, it's been a good program. What it does is it stops our guys from raking up close to the dune. And you can see how that, that vegetation is coming down. We don't do it on the Margate side because we lose so much beach there and high tides, we really can't restrict that area. What they're asking for is a letter of support. They're applying for a new grant. And we've been supportive. They've been a good partner with us. Their team comes down in like April, puts the stakes out, um, works with Ed's office. If you stand on the pier and look north, you can see the difference.
Yeah.
Protecting what we're paying for, right, each time we get a dune in the books. So. I, I, I'm supporting it. I'm just asking, I didn't want to do it by without your guys.
No, absolutely.
So. All right, so I'll first. They gave us draft letter. And that's all I have for discussion, right? All right, so our first public portion, we will open this up to any items that were discussed on tonight's agenda. Uh, that we've already spoken about this evening. We need a motion to open the public.
Motion of public.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So if you'd like to speak either on the Zoom meeting or here in person about anything on our agenda tonight, please come up to the microphone, state your name. And tell us what you want to talk about. Go online first. Jim, is there anybody out there that wants to make any comments on items we're discussing tonight?
Is there anybody out on Zoom who wishes to speak or question on any of the items that were spoken about or being voted on tonight? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand within the chat feature and you'll be recognized.
Uh, Michael Saywitz, if you rec, if you see me, I would like to speak briefly. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can.
Very good. First of all, I appreciate everything all you do for our community. It's my first time attending one of these meetings. I don't envy you, um, but I appreciate you, so thank you. Um, I was going to talk about the parking issue. Maybe it's not appropriate to talk about it now, and I should wait till you bring it up again. But I have communicated with both commissioners about this issue, so I think you pretty much know where I stand. I still have a problem of a vehicle that's been abandoned in front of my property at twelve North Wyoming. For almost four weeks now, and it goes to the heart of this very issue. So I'm not asking you to address that tonight, but the, it's a very important issue about leaving commercial vehicles on, on the streets for an extended period of time. So I'll leave it at that. I, I just also wanted to comment on the Airbnb. I have a next door neighbor who has an Airbnb and it's a serious problem. They bring in fifteen people into a small house for a one or two night party. People get drunk, they're making noise at four or five in the morning. And I think if you went to a model more closely resembling Margate, you would get more families and less problematic issues. And I'll leave it at that. Okay?
Um, yeah, thank you for your emails and I, we did, I did share them with the police chief and the other commissioners. I think one suggestion, and, and we are cleaning up the overnight parking of commercial. The, and, and sort of separating the areas so that it can be enforced. But I would say the abandoned vehicle can be a separate call that you can make and report it, and that could be handled. Separately from waiting for this order, abandoned vehicle would, 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 would be a parallel, would be something separate from a, a commercial vehicle overnight park. So you can call that in any, you can call and make a complaint on that anytime.
So I can now call the police and say the, the vehicle's abandoned and they will either ticket or tow it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I thank you very much. Have a great day and I appreciate being part of the community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Yep.
Anyone else on Zoom, Jim?
Yes, T. Parsons wishes to speak.
Uh, yes, Timothy Parsons, uh, one oh three North Dorset. And I had a question about the Open Container Act. Uh, as near as I can tell, it's basically to allow the BYOB restaurants to, to allow dining on their, their sidewalks where they have tables. Um, I guess first is, is that the intent? And then second, going through the language, it seems a little ambiguous in a couple areas. It talks about carrying and, uh, you know, it's ambiguous to me whether the, they're allowed to drink outside the light, the restaurant. Or whether or not it's specifically limited to say directly in front of the restaurant that's licensed. And I guess my concern is I don't want people wandering up and down the sidewalk in front of my house. Uh, which where I live is a commercial district, I understand that, but I don't want them wandering up and down in front of the house. Carrying, uh, open containers of alcohol, drinking, being rowdy. So I guess my concern is, can you tighten up that language a little bit possibly?
Definitely the intent is to just on the property in front of the commercial business that is, that is the restaurant. That is allowing them to bring their own, own alcohol. Um, you okay with, do we, you think that's tight enough, Mark?
I believe the language is pretty clear on that.
Okay. And, and as long as that's, uh, as long as that's understood and the, and that's the way the city intends to enforce it.
Yeah, we, we don't, it is not authorizing people to walk down the street with, with open alcohol.
And in fact, it says we prohibit highways, parking lots, public pier, yeah, things of those.
Okay.
So, yeah, you, you read, you read it correctly. The intent is to put us in compliance with outdoor seating when BYOBs are.
Okay, and that's what I, that's what I thought. I just didn't see it say, you know, sitting at the table or, or on the property of the restaurant or directly in front of it. It just said outside, which is kind of ambiguous to me, but okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom, Jim? I see some things popping up there.
Uh, Nancy Walker has a question.
Hey Nancy. Hi, Nancy Walker, fifty-six oh one Edgewater Avenue. Um, myself and Nicole are on here to talk about a safety issue that's not on the agenda.
All right, we're going to, Nancy, we'll ask you to come in at the end. We, we save this portion for the items that are on the agenda, so if you can.
Okay, well, I, I did have a question about the commercial vehicles and the trucks parking all the time on the street. Because we live on Edgewater Avenue, so. If that rule is going to be changed, who, do I call the police and report that it's there? The non-emergency number as I've done in the past?
Yeah.
Okay, and can you clarify again what the hours are that they are not allowed to be parked on the street?
Nine PM to six AM.
Correct. So it's commercial vehicles that are, vehicles that are used for a commercial purpose that are not residents. So you have to be, uh, what will happen is when you call it in.
Right.
The location and the resident, where they live, if that person happens to live on Edgewater or nearby.
Right.
They're not going to, they're allowed, they'll be allowed to park their commercial vehicle there.
Oh, they're allowed to park on the street?
If they are a resident.
If they're a resident, so if you live.
Even if it's an obstruction, if it's a big ladder truck with ladders on it.
Uh, so ma'am, ma'am, if you let us speak for one minute, we'll try and explain this to you.
Go ahead.
So the purpose of this is if you own a business and you have a home in Ventnor.
Right.
You're allowed to park your truck at your property as long as it's of a certain size.
Okay.
If you're a contractor working in the neighborhood, you cannot leave your truck there overnight.
Right, so.
So.
There are professionals that are also entitled to park their vehicles. Uh, we're going to limit it to two so that you don't have someone that has like a commercial parking lot created.
Okay, and, and do they, are they supposed to park in their driveway first?
We can't, we can't, um, we can't legislate that they park in their driveway or actually that they park in any particular spot or even nearby their home. It's hard, it's, it, they wouldn't, they, we, we couldn't charge them with not parking in a driveway. So we're going to encourage that and the ordinance as good neighbors to park in the driveway first. But we can't really enforce that.
So basically it's only for contractors. It's not for people that might have a business.
Right.
And they park four trucks on Edgewater.
Correct, so, and, and so if they own it, if there's a construction business and they're parking more than two vehicles on Edgewater. Then they would have to thin that number of vehicles out. If there, there's a lot of construction going on in Edgewater, there's two homes under construction at least.
I agree.
All right.
If we'll take that shit, you're a contractor, you have a pickup and that.
You bring it home.
Right. Take their, right, but, but two, which is.
Yeah.
Parking issues we have.
Right, we're talking about residents, so it's not, it's not like it's their.
But even as a professional.
Yeah, I agree.
You have one vehicle.
All right, we can, we can, we can, we can iron that out. Um, right, so it's not, right, we're not trying to create a commercial parking around a residential neighborhood. So, so that might thin that out and, and on Edgewater, like I said, there's a number of new homes going up. If those, those contractors are leaving them overnight, those are the ones you can call on.
Yeah.
And they'll find out whether they're, whether they're residents or not. We're also going to look at doing a, a parallel to that, um, trailers and create, uh, uh, some contractors leave trailers overnight. We want to try to restrict that as well. They have to be on the property. They have to be right, they have to be on the property. They can't be in the street. Edgewater is one of the most narrow streets that we have. It's a very, it's very difficult to navigate. You're kind of taking your mirrors and you're in harm's way when you park on Edgewater. You know that.
Dumpsters are not written.
No, dumpsters are not allowed to be off, off the street.
I saw one on the street. So that.
Might be one or two.
This is, this is Michael Saywitz. Can I add one more quick question if you don't mind? I, I, are you going to address in the revised legislation, the issue of leaving vehicles in the same spot? For an, an extended period of time? I understand having a homeowner who leaves his vehicle on the street overnight. Because he goes to work the next day, but as in the case of the vehicle in front of my home, the, the truck was, is there now three and a half weeks or more.
So if the, if the vehicle's licensed, you can't control how long it stays on the street. And if it's within the size of a, what we're, we're trying to narrow this down to, which is more of a smaller pickup trucks and one personal vehicle. Now, an abandoned, you can call in an abandoned vehicle, I think it's three days is the, is that measure.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I think that's a problem because people are going to start using the streets as their parking lots and, and leaving their vehicles. So I would ask you to consider that as part of the legislation, that there's a limit in how long you can leave a vehicle in one spot.
You talking about commercial vehicle or just any vehicles?
No, commercial vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah.
If somebody's home and they park their car out in front of their house, you can't, yeah.
I'm not talking about a, I'm not talking about a, a car. I'm not talking about a.
If it's a commercial vehicle that is permitted, it's the right size and the person lives there, they can park their car out in front of their home.
It may have signage on it, but they're, 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 have every right, just like a person who's a.
What if it's a block away? I'm just curious. I mean, where, where do you end it?
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
The street is a public park.
We're trying to limit it.
You have to understand the street is parking for everyone, not just the people who live right in front of that portion of the street, so.
I, I appreciate.
Trying to help with the, the construction vehicles that are prevalent through the city, especially in the summertime. And they're being left overnight. That's really the goal of this is to, is to eliminate most of them, the larger ones. And to allow the ones that are for our residents that happen to own a business that they have a commercial vehicle for.
And which perfect for one is not necessarily, I mean, we can't let perfect get in the way of better.
Yeah.
So we're trying to make improvements.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Uh, I just want to say, Nancy Walker just wanted clarification, um, that the commercial vehicles includes both cars and trucks, correct?
Vehicles used for commercial purposes.
Yes, they have a commercial tag on it, yes.
Okay, uh, anybody else on Zoom wishes to speak, please make yourself known and you'll be recognized. Uh, no one else?
Thank you, Jim. Anyone in the, in the chambers want to speak? Seeing none, motion to close.
Second motion.
Oh. Correct, only on the items that we're speaking about.
We'll have another.
We'll have a public thing at the end. Thank you. Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public portion is closed. Also need a motion to close the workshop portion and call to order the regular meeting.
Motion to close workshop portion and open regular.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Call to order our regular portion of our meeting this evening. On the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. From May twelfth, both regular and executive. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Motion to approve minutes as described.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have to do that, right? Consent? Okay, well then we'll do roll call. Roll call, please.
Mr. Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty sixth, again, both regular and executive.
Motion to approve minutes as described.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes, and we're going to table the June ninth until. Right, we have no ordinance introductions. Need a, to open, we need a motion to open a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one zero one. Ordinance to the Vent, City of Ventnor, County of Atlantic, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter forty-seven Sewer and Water Utility.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance zero one zero.
My second motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Okay, we're open to the public on this ordinance. Is there any comments either online or on the hybrid, uh, Zoom call or in the chambers?
Anybody in Zoom wishes to speak a question on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero, please make yourself known, you'll be recognized.
Seeing none, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero.
Motion to adopt ordinance zero one zero.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Need a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one one. That is chapter one sixty-one Alcohol Beverage Section nine prohibitions.
Need a motion, motion to open public hearing, ordinance zero one one.
My second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now open on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one one. Any comments on Zoom or in the chambers?
Anybody in Zoom wishes to speak a question, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one one, please make yourself known and you'll be recognized. Does anybody in Zoom wishes to speak a question, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one one, please make yourself known and you'll be recognized. No one?
Thanks, Jim, seeing none, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one one.
Motion to adopt ordinance zero one one.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. And we're gonna table twelve, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance, no, nevermind. Motion to open public hearing with ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one three. Which is, uh, amending supplementing chapter two fourteen, section twenty-one fire prevention.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance zero thirteen.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public portion is open on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one three.
Anybody in Zoom wish to speak a question, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one three, please make yourself known and you'll be recognized.
Anybody here in the chambers want to speak on this one, please make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll ask for motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one three.
Motion to adopt ordinance zero one three.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Need a motion to adopt by consent resolutions twenty twenty-two, two one zero through two two zero.
Motion to adopt resolutions as described.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Now, could you provide our, our bills and payroll?
Yes, uh, the bill list for this period was three million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. And the payroll for this period was six hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
Need a motion to approve bills and payroll as indicated by our CFO.
Motion to approve bills and, bills and pay.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes, our announcements and safety report are on our agenda, um, any commissioner comments or reports?
Um, I just wanna thank the, uh, the, the fire department and the police department fighting the, uh, a, um. Uh, large structure fire, um, started following it as it began, it was very difficult to stop. Um, we called in, uh, Margate and Longport. And had to basically shut down the city between the theater and four blocks in the center of the town at a very busy time.
Yeah.
Um, crowd formed, um, and in the midst of, of battling this fire. Um, and shift, shift change at the police department, we had two shifts on luckily. Um, called them all in to, for, for traffic and crowd control, we had a burglary in progress, which makes. So the police department had to shift from crowd, crowd control to pursuit and apprehension, which they did. And, um, all within the span of a few moments, so it was, um. Uh, we also had, uh, our O E M assistant there, who was, um, helping move vehicles. We had public works trucks blocking traffic on streets that came by at a moment's notice.
Yep.
We had, uh, class one, young kids right out of, but they looked like babies to me, but they're. They're, they're blocking traffic across, again, across, from, almost from Bay to Ocean, four blocks of the middle of the city. No injuries. Um, and, uh, and as complete a, uh, attack and knockdown fires. Not difficult situation, so I just wanted to thank all those departments for their professionalism and keeping on task. A lot of things, a lot of.
I agree, complete, these guys did a fantastic job, I followed as well and.
Both chiefs were not working at the time, sorry to interrupt.
No.
Both chiefs came in within a matter of moments of their respective homes, um, which you'd expect, but no one's got.
No, it was, I, fantastic job across the board, um, if, that, that could have taken that whole block.
Easily.
Yeah. Easily taken that whole block, first of all, the wind's blowing in a very advantageous direction, it's blowing hard.
Yeah.
It was blowing right out of the bag.
Right.
So kept it a little bit controllable from going side to side, but, you know, we could have lost the theater, we could have lost. More down, down that road all the way down to Mr. Gordo's.
Right.
Uh, just a really good job, I was in Brigantene last night and talked to their mayor and thanked those guys for doing. As fire departments do, they all do the backup.
Right.
It was all back from Lanxton to Brigantene.
That's right, so Atlantic City was covered, Brigantene was covering Atlantic City, we had, right, we had the Atlantic City plant putting water on two different direct. It was a, it was, it was a serious fire that took longer to, to, to control than it would, than I've seen in the past.
We're hopeful that the SACO building is salvageable.
Right.
Um, talking with Jimmy this morning, he thinks the insurance company's gonna wanna try and get him to save it, which. He wanted to open sooner than later, so that's the better option, um, obviously the, the Magna Building is down.
There is not a.
Um, that was done, American demolition's here two o'clock in the morning.
Right.
Saturday, some, starting that, because the wall was.
Was the right thing to do.
Yeah, absolutely, it was in danger of collapse, so.
Yeah.
Good work by, again, teamwork all the way through from construction, fully up the ladder.
That's right, construction was here.
Public works guys did a good job, that.
It was a big, it was, it was, it was all hands on deck.
It was.
So, thank you.
That's kind of all I have, I don't really have too much more, the headquarters is coming along great, we got all our doors and windows.
Yeah, looks great.
In, so we'll be siding and getting that thing going, cheap rocks going up inside, I think already, right? Okay. Okay. Reminder about the fireworks on July third, um, also the pier will be open on July fourth. Previewing of Margate and Atlantic City fireworks, I did hear that Borghata and Hours are not doing fireworks this year, so they'll all be along. The beachfront, um, so you'll see some, I think Tropicana does on the beach. They'll do theirs on Saturday night, because they typically do, right, I guess they'll do theirs on Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
But then again, on the fourth, they do the big one, and then Margate mothers does theirs on, on the fourth as well, so. Pier will be open to the public that night, all the way up to the end, no fishing will happen after six. I know there were some posts about the lifeguard beaches that were guarding and you handled that right on, right on.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll just follow up, there were some questions about, um, pages or beaches that are not covered and, uh, historically. We have, uh, we only had eight beaches, uh, uh, that were, that were guarded, we have eleven now. Um, we are in the sort of that, that flux time between when, uh, the weather starts getting nice and kids get out of class. We had, um, eighteen candidates, and so we're a little shorthand, we had eighteen candidates for rookies this year, sixteen passed. And, um, three went to other municipalities, so, uh. So we have about, um, thirteen new recruits this year. So that should, um, bring us up to speed for, uh.
I, I know, I know one that'll be back in August that wants to help.
Okay. We're not to the point where we're shooting up my generation, but. Of guards?
No, no.
But we have a couple.
Anything else?
No.
Ray, you got anything? Um, just an update on our beach mats, um. We've, we've put out the ones that we purchased for this year, um, we try to spread them through, out, through, through the beach access points. Um, we are reevaluating the use of these beach mats, we are being, uh, we're in litigation or it's a threat of litigation. Um, no, can't get too much into that, because someone slipped on sand on a beach mat. Really annoying, so, uh, that's, we're gonna reevaluate that. I'm on the fence on these things, you know, they're, they're there for elderly and people have trouble walking on sand to help them. And now we're, people are suing us because they're there, so it's a little frustrating, you try and do something.
Yeah.
Nice.
I, I think there are benefits, I mean, I walk down, over the dunes on, it makes it much easier.
They are.
With all your gear.
But, but then you've got someone who slipped on sand that happened to be on a sandy beach.
Right.
Uh, and will be litigated, so I don't wanna get into that, but it's, it's frustrating. Yeah, we have to clean them, um, we have to clean them with the wind, it's your, your natural environment. We have, we bought new equipment to do it, blowers and brooms, the, the power brooms that sweep them off. Um, so we're gonna make an effort to, to clean them and do what we can.
In other words, not simply just the mat.
No, it's not just throwing down a mat, so the other aspect of it is, you know, we pay for these, we try to pay for these through. Various means of funding that we, that come to the city from N J D E P permitting applications. When someone develops along the coast, either the bay or the beach, and they don't provide public access through their property. The D E P makes them provide donations to the municipality they're in, and we use those funds. Try to use those funds as much as we can to pay for these showers and the beach mats.
Right.
That's why we don't do them all at once, they're three or four thousand dollars per beach mat.
Walkover.
Yeah, so, so, we will, we will try to do more as we can, but we also are evaluating, let's talk to our J F. Insurance carriers. Anything else?
I, I just wanna, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I thank Tina for coming in, our, our new director and she, uh, for coming in. I know there's some things on her that are on our agenda that affect her department, and, um, thank you again for. I look forward to a great summer and lots of pickleball.
There's more than.
No, there's not. That's the only thing that we do.
There's tons of. Tina's doing great, she's joining us, thank you, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Think I missed? All right, we'll open it up one last time for public comment on any item, I get a motion to open a public.
Motion to open public comment.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Start one up to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Larry Metzman and I live at one oh nine South Harvard. A good fortune has allowed us to be here in town for thirty-nine years and I wanted to first compliment. The, uh, management of Ventnor, some things have been going on in the last few years that are wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
The problem that I'm here to address is to ask you, how do I take the next step or where do I go? Um, beach access on Harvard Avenue. The wind has blown the sand up on the walkway or the walk through between, supposedly between the dunes. Okay, uh, to the point where the sand is piled up pretty much as high as the dunes. Okay, and I have some pictures to show you if you're interested.
I use the same beach access, like.
We do, I, yeah, so I'll live on Harvard.
We didn't.
Both of us live on Harvard Avenue.
Wonderful, and you maybe, well, you see, the difference is that we're in our eighties and, um. Climbing up that hill was no problem when I was in my thirties and, nor my wife in the thirties. But I thought that by going over to Public Works, first I called, the people there are wonderful, the gals are great. Um, I wasn't getting very far and it's Barbara, who's a sweetie. Told me, come by and see Mr. Stinson. And I came by, of course, she told me he's there in the morning, he didn't happen to be there. When I went there, I asked for a call back, never got a call back, email address, telephone number, nothing, okay. I know the group is busy, they have a lot of things going on. We pay a lot of taxes by beach badges, I wanna be able to use the beach.
Sure.
I can't get to the beach. They, there used to be a straight path and then the mats. Now it took two mats to get up from the beach to the top of the hill. The fences that were there before are pretty much buried by sand. I'm no genius, but it seems to me that a couple of guys with a cup, with some shovels. Or, uh, a little cat, that machine could level that down so that we can get to the beach.
Right, so we, we do that and we were very early in the season. So as of, we, we're gonna start that procedure on all the beach walkovers, not just yours. We're gonna start that process on Monday and we will go through each of them and excavate them out and try and get them down where they're more accessible. Um, is there a beach mat at Harvard? Yeah, this is Ed Stinson right here.
There is. Oh, that's, hello.
This is your life.
I asked the secretaries to tell you that we would be out there, uh, but the issue with Harvard as, as several of the beach paths. Down this end, uh, the, the dune has, has built up, which is, is.
What it's supposed to do.
What it's supposed to do, but it's built up not just on the path, it's built up adjacent to the path. So on, on the Atlantic City side of our path, the dune is higher than that split rail fence. So when we go in, we did already early in April, we went in and we hit every beach path. But if I dig that down, we dig that down to where the army fort built. Correct, at the bottom of that split rail, you are left with a cliff. Of dune on that side, which I can't leave, right, that's, that's in danger that it collapses. Plus, even if I dig down a little, which is what we did last year, the first wind blows the sand. From the dune that has built up next to the path, right onto that pitch. And then I'm back trying to dig out the blue mat, because now I have had the dune. I, I'll tell you what, what our answer is, what, what we're trying to do, we've applied to the D E P. For a permit that would allow us to knock down that pile of sand that is above the, the design template of the dune. Ninety-four, right? But they didn't give us a permission, so I can't do. Can't do that, but we have. We're asking for the permit and, and we'll keep it posted, but until I have that, I don't have a solution, I understand the concern. The best solution that we came up with right now is to put the mat up and over. I do bring the machine, like you said, but I try just to level it out, so that the mat's not on this angle. But other than that, I, I don't have a good answer for it. But I heard you, I asked the ladies to, to let you know that we were out there. But I, I. The mats are there.
True.
Still doesn't help trying to get up to the level in order to go down. I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have a good solution, if we take the mat back and I dig that path out to where the army fort built, where it was meant to be. Yeah, A, I have that cliff, I cannot leave that, I'm not allowed going upside and down, yet I don't have that permit. So I can't do that, so the best option that I got is to try to level out where it is, but I don't have this cliff.
Thank you for the work that you're doing, my question, what can the. Citizens and taxpayers do to help you get permission through the.
Sean Laratette.
Old already, I'll get to be even older if I.
We have an application pending with the D E P, uh, that is asking permission to knock that, that. To, to lower the accreted sand adjacent to the path so that we, we can avoid this. I, I, I don't know who, I don't, I don't know that there's anything you can, the New Jer, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
Which is.
Up in Trent.
So Mr. Metz, Metzman, is it? Um, one of the things I might suggest, and, and that's how I get down to the beach, I go to the north side of the pier, but. I know it's an extra block for you to walk down and then you gotta walk back, is at Cambridge Avenue, I think there's a little better walkway there. That's, that's a little easier, it's not as, not as filled in with sand. Um, there's also, you can go out the pier and go down the steps, but that might be also, with your carrying things, it's a pain in the butt. I will say this, if you call our lifeguards.
I was gonna say.
And I'm throwing this right, right in Mr. Mr. Kreebel's lap, they will come get you.
Oh, that'll go over fit with my wife.
Yeah, if you can.
No, you're a big shot, tell them you're a big shot, you gotta ride down to the beach. I understand, I understand. I completely understand and.
We're taxpayers as well.
That deserves a ride in the gator, right?
So the, the, so, yeah, so we do do offer that service, you call the beach patrol, I'm looking, I was just about to mention that, I'm looking at where Harvard. What they would probably have to do though is to take you to, pick you up and take you to a different beach or on the boardwalk.
They could bring him down to that.
And take you down and around, and then we do it for handicapped and seniors all the time.
Do it all the time.
It's, it's a busy service, sometimes you'll see.
Okay.
The most senior.
Yeah.
Chief of the beach patrol doing it himself.
Yeah, Chief Burgin, I've seen him do it.
So if you call.
That's something I hadn't thought of.
But if you call, they'll call.
Thank you kindly. Thank you kindly and.
Got to get you to the beach.
Please do, continue to do the kind of things that are making Ventnor better than it ever was.
Thank you, appreciate that. We'll work on that path. Anyone else? Aye.
Call back.
I apologize. I had, I had COVID early in the month, I'm sorry, so.
My name is Marlon Majoy. I live at six, six, one, eight, Venter Avenue, and I have parking issues.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
And I know the last time we spoke, which was April, this is my third meeting in a row because my son was inducted last.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm here waiting.
And I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I apologize, I did get your email and I, I was, I, I did have COVID, that's why I was not at the earlier meeting. And it did take me out for a couple of weeks, so I'm paying attention. Sure, sure, I, I was out with COVID, I, I am just catching up. And I think there was some confusion about what you had, thought we had said about that parking not being, being eliminated. We're not eliminating any parking meters on, on Venter Avenue.
No.
No, and I, I thought I sent that in an email, that, the, what you have there is a place to park where, in a driveway of your own.
Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, that, that drive, that, that curb cut that you have is, um, is also sort of out.
It's now home to my new electric car.
Okay.
Fits perfectly.
Right, so, so what you're doing is flying under sort of an, uh, uh, a, um, an ordinance in a way that, um, we'll, that the city allows residents to park within their own curb cuts if the parking is busy. It's kind of like your own spot in a way. We're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to ticket you for parking.
I got two tickets for it so far. So I talked to all the guards, or, you know, police officers, whatever.
The new police, yeah.
Yeah.
Summer special.
And they're, you know, slowly understanding that, okay.
Right, so they, they ticketed your car in front of your own driveway. There's not, unless someone calls the plane, they don't.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
They're super nice.
We'll work on that, but I, I think there's also an issue about the driveway itself. It's not really, it's.
Well, when I ask them specifically, the, um, if they think of the driveway, they do. I don't know how I got them the tickets, but I paid them. So you were talking about just that cutout right there.
Yeah, well, that's the homeowner's responsibility to have that, um, but the, so the question, I, I'll circle back with the chief on tomorrow. But the, is the driveway a driveway or is it?
It was a driveway when I bought it. It was a shared driveway, uh, between Dr. Moan's office and myself.
Right.
And, um.
Is this go-to parking in the back?
Yeah, there's two garages in the back.
There's two garage.
I have one, he has one.
Right. So it's a, it's a very narrow product.
It is.
Barely six.
It is.
Why?
They told me they got their Cadillac back there. I find it hard to believe.
Yeah.
But they, that's.
Carefully.
A newer Cadillac or an old?
I, it was an old one.
Really?
Weren't they like boats?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it.
It looks like a driveway for now.
It, it looks, it looks like an alleyway and a half.
Alright, so we'll get to the bottom of it. I apologize for not getting back to you sooner.
So anybody that doesn't understand my situation, I never had to pay for parking before, and now I do pay for parking to live at my own house because parking meters went up everywhere. We're mostly residential there, but there's, um, Dr. Moan's office, like out of the four duplexes, there's Dr. Moan's office there.
Right, but to be fair, it's mixed use, it's not residential.
I mean, I never knew it wasn't residential, I thought it was resident, I mean, there's.
So that's, the zone is a commercial.
Zone is a commercial zone.
But I know that two blocks over from me, Barbie's, no restrictions there. That's not residential.
Barbie's is what?
That's a hair salon. It's two, two streets over.
Right.
Right, there's no restrictions there, no.
There's only one, but your block, your entire block is mixed use, zone, mixed use, not residential. So that's why there's.
But that, all I'm saying is there's other blocks that are mixed zone or mixed whatever. They have apartments and.
On Venter Avenue.
On Venter Avenue.
Building, there's one building that has a, an, an office in the base of it, and that may be.
So Ray just reminded me that when you were out for a couple of weeks, so there is discussion on changing how we do it there. Okay, so bear with us.
I will, I will. I just want to point out the discrepancies.
I will ask them to, to, to pause that until we can get to the bottom.
Alright.
Alright.
I really don't want to come every once, but I mean, these are fascinating meetings, and you do a great job. It's twice a month? Are you kidding? I've been missing meetings and I didn't even know.
Alright, we'll circle back. Anyone else? Jim, is anybody in Zoom that wants to speak? I know we had the Walker, Ms. Walker.
Yes, Ms. Walker, Mr. Jacoby, uh, you wish to speak?
Miss, uh, yep, I'm Nicole Jacoby, hello everyone. Um, myself and my husband Lambros live on Edgewater Ave with our three-year-old son. We've lived here for the last nine years. Um, we're local business owners and year-round residents. Uh, thank you for opening the forum to the public today. I'm here today with a few of my neighbors because Edgewater Avenue has become increasingly more dangerous. Uh, it's to the point where I can't even have my three-year-old son outside. There have been numerous altercations between adults and even adults and minors due to the excessive speeding on this street caused by lack of signage or lack of speed bumps. Um, if you may be aware that between Dorset Ave and Surrey Ave, there are zero stop signs, which allows people to use Edgewater Avenue as a freeway. Um, more frequently than not, uh, people are driving between forty and sixty miles an hour down this street. I don't even know if stop signs will work at this point because they're so used to flying down the road. I think that a speed bump, uh, would be the most effective fix, although I don't know if that's possible. Uh, in addition to that, the one-way signage is lacking. Um, it should certainly be painted on the street as well. People driving the wrong way down the street has become worse and worse over the years. Um, we're very excited about the new businesses just a few doors down from us on Dorset Ave, but our concern is that this issue will only grow with the more traffic and more visitors here. And I would love to invite someone from the city to come out and evaluate, uh, this street and the current dangers it poses for all who live there here, especially my three-year-old son.
Okay, thank you. Um, I actually frequent the street, I rent a garage there. So I do see some of the issues, and I have seen cars going the wrong way to, to loop around with some of the side streets. What I'll ask Ed to do is to, to look at the signage there, that, for one-way signage on Edgewater, that block from Dorset to Surrey. See if we can bolster that a little bit.
The, the speeding is the bigger issue.
Jacoby, one, one second.
Yep.
Our city engineers trying to answer some of your comments.
So I'll, I'll get together with the police chief and, and take a look out there. I, I have met with him before and we posted additional one-way signs, uh, but I will get with him again and see if anything else.
Throw up some speed limit signs too, maybe?
I'll make sure those.
I, I would bet we won't warrant stop signs just from the amount of traffic that comes through there.
Yeah, and speed bumps aren't illegal, or, or you can't put speed, speed bumps on a residential street. Uh, I don't, without a lot of, a lot of approvals or.
The speed bumps, the, the, what we typically call the speed bumps, the narrow.
Humps.
They're, they, you cannot do. You can do tabletops, uh, speed bumps.
Right.
They call them.
Yeah.
Um, and, and again, I, I'll discuss, I think, one step that the chief typically does when we have complaints about speeding is we put up that, that radar sign.
Yeah, right.
So we, we have a movable radar sign that checks. I think, I appreciate, I, I, I know that seems like they're going forty to sixty, but we can, we have a, we have a, uh, a, we have a, a speed sign that can go into stealth mode and, and keep track of the actual pattern and the speeds that vehicles are going, and it, it, it's a different perception, but we will, we'll, I, I agree. I think it's a, it's a, it's a problematic street, especially when, uh, when you see people coming down Oxford and making the right or going the wrong direction down there. But the, it's a double-edged sword, that, uh, having a new business is a benefit, but that, that area has always been zoned, and I think, and actually, there were, years ago, there were businesses and restaurants on those corners that are just not, that just hadn't been there for decades.
Right.
So, um, it's part of the, the, the double-edged sword of growth, I think, is that, um, uh, I think that's going to be a popular place, but I think it's going to be, it's going to grow.
We will certainly look into a little further, Mr. Kobe.
Thank you, appreciate your help.
Sure. Anyone else on Zoom?
Anybody else wishes to speak on any items, please make yourself known. Nope, nobody else.
Okay, anyone else in, in the, uh, chambers, sorry? Hey, with that, motion to close?
Motion to close.
A second? On favor?
Aye.
Okay, public portion is closed. We have no executive session, right?
No, it is correct.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second on favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Zoom night, yeah.